I'm here today, I really appreciate it. I see we have a lot of people in the know and I'm sorry, we don't have a bigger audience for you, but I appreciate you taking your time and coming and joining us this morning. So, thank you very much.
We appreciate that.
People in the know. Let's see.
Where are they? Yeah. About finding a selectmen, a moderator.
Oh, well, I was like, my moderator might know a couple places.
You know something.
Russell.
So, we're gonna do this like we've done it in the past, very informal. We'll just run through the articles.
Sure, you can say.
We're not here to debate them, just to kind of clarify what some of these mean. I'm gonna start with the special, and we'll walk through that. Article one in the special town meeting is to see if the town will vote to raise their appropriate transfer from available funds with a sum of $2,000 for the interim valuation of the town. That's something we do every year, and that is gonna come out of the reserve fund. Pretty straightforward. Article two is to transfer $20,000 to fund the other post-employee benefits. This was established by a town meeting vote in accordance with chapter 32, Act 8. And this $20,000 would also come out of the reserve fund. It's recommended by the board of selectmen, recommended by the finance committee. So, if anybody has questions, just jump in and move through these. Article three is to see if the town will vote from available funds, a sum of $10,000 to pay for contractual obligations in a sick leave buyback for a retirement personnel, recommended by the board of selectmen, recommended by the finance committee. That ten.
Ask a question.
Sure.
So, that would be someone that, like a police or fire, not the school, because they handle their own.
That's right.
Police or fire, someone that's retiring.
Right.
Okay.
And that also will come out of the reserve fund. Article four, to see if the town will transfer a sum of $10,000 to continue state mandated repairs to the Winnantucket Street Dam, recommended by the board of selectmen and the finance committee, and the $10,000 is expected to come out of the reserve fund also.
Now, Richards, the Winnantucket Dam, is that town by Tim's?
Yeah, that's the one down by my house. They put 30 yards down below, but it's more than that, the road itself, they did the testing, the pile asters, and they use these needles, and one of them stuck in about six inch or something hard, so those, all kinds of stuff has to be done with me. $10,000 is cheap, surprise.
But it has nothing to do with the way the land was given?
That's all taken care of. The one by, on Ring Road is all set up. May I speak on that?
Sure.
The Conservation Commission has authorized, through the state, the demolition of that dam with proper water flows and so forth and so on. They have to take out some trees that cause erosion, but going underneath the bridge, you have a six-foot diameter culvert pipe that goes underneath it, which will, in a hundred-year storm, work. The issue is, is making sure that the stone doesn't go into the culvert pipe, so there's a lot of extensive work that's being, gonna be done down there at the state and owner's expense, not in the town.
Okay. So, there'll be no dam when there's?
No, they're just gonna open it right up. For some reason, the state of Massachusetts, well, I can understand, we have a lot of old dams in the state, and instead of repairing them, they want them removed, because they believe a free throw is fish. And we want to go there, free throw of fish. So, that's what it's all about.
It's not gonna cost the town?
Not a dime from the town, not a dime.
And it's not gonna, the land they gave us, that?
Down below?
To Cato's Ridge, there's nothing to do with this.
Nothing to do with Cato's Ridge.
These places, okay.
Nope, nothing to do with that.
That's all.
Article five, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,000 from the annual town meeting, article four, line 610, veterans benefit, to the May 2014 annual town meeting, line 20, group insurance, $5,000, recommended by this board of selectmen.
Can I just add, John?
Sure.
Any article that isn't requiring expenditure of money, the finance committee doesn't weigh in on, it's not that we don't recommend this or do, we just don't weigh in, because it doesn't, it's not.
Right. So, it's just a transfer from one line to another?
To transfer, so that's why there's nothing there from the finance committee.
Thank you. Article six is much the same, see if the town will transfer line item 515 fire equipment to line item 510 fire EMS.
Transfer what?
We don't have a sum of money at this time, do you?
See, the town transfer.
I don't know the sum of money, it should say.
Yeah, we need the money in there.
Barbara was, Barbara Gomez, the town accountant, at the time we were sitting down to do this, was checking to get the right amount. I don't have it right now.
Okay, that's right.
Well, it'll happen, it's the town meeting.
No, I don't have it.
Yeah. And that takes care of the special town meeting. So, then we go to the annual town meeting articles. Article one is just to hear any reports of town offices, so if there is a committee that wants to report a town meeting, they'll stand up and be recognized and make their report. It's not a money article at all. Article two is a traditional article to see if the town of Plimpton will vote to authorize the town treasurer to empty or compensate the balance agreements in accordance with Mass General Law. We do this every year, it just allows the treasurer to be set up with the state. It's recommended by the board of selectmen. I also have who's speaking on these, but I'm not gonna, unless you really want to. That'll be recommended as the article is printed. Article three is the traditional wage and personnel classification plans. They've recommended a 2% merit increase, and you can see as you go through there, all the different town people, and what they've been paid and recommended to be paid. So, unless there's a question, it's asked printed. Article four is to budget. Do you wanna talk about that, too? Anybody have any question?
Just, from article four down, we're talking about expenditures, this, that, and others. Well, I'm missing, like, article sixty, well, some of these are missing the dollar amounts, or saying, you know, simply town would vote to, you know, take money from, you know, stabilization funds and so forth, but it doesn't give the amount of dollars.
Sometimes they're, I don't know, we'll have to look at the specific articles, but if they don't have the exact dollar amount, they amend it on town meeting floor, because they don't know where this is printed. It will absolutely be a number then, but if they don't know the number when this is printed, they will.
Thank you.
If there's any questions about the budget, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it's just, it's, there's a lot there.
I just wondered if you'd give us a little, like, the status of the financial state of the town, or some kind of general comment, unless you'd rather not.
This year, we have very, very large increases in mostly education budgets that we don't control. We have vocational education, special education, those numbers aren't numbers we can adjust, and the Silver Lake assessment is also a large increase this year, and it amounted to $540,000. And so, when you have that much of an increase that you don't really control, what we tried to do, to the extent we could, was level fund everybody else with adjustments of the 2% salary and some other adjustments that we thought were particularly in need, as a way to try to keep the overall increase under control. We also funded what we could out of the capital stabilization account, and what, last year, we used a lot of one-time funds, and the risk with that, and it's in the warrant last year, is that you have a lot of space under the levy limit. The levy limit goes up 2.5% every year, whether or not you use it, and if you don't use it one year, the next year you have 5% increase as possible under that limit. And so, we, people are throwing numbers around, nobody knows what the tax increase is right now, because we don't know the town's valuation, and it can't be calculated, and so I don't wanna use a number. I can tell you the tax increase with this budget is gonna be over 2.5%, and we still have more room. We've tried to keep this under the levy, I think a couple hundred thousand dollars under the levy. So, on a town meeting, if people choose to amend these numbers up, every time you do that, that's a tax increase. So, we did the best we could, it's a very, it's a very difficult balance.
I think, answer, you?
No, I'm sorry.
I think that it's important that the people at town meeting understand the difficulty our town is in at this point, with reference to finance. Just like a few years ago, we had a town leader, the moderator, said, "If you vote for something, your taxes are gonna go up." That's basically what's going on at this point, from my understanding. And I, my understanding is, if you go up to 5%, raising the taxes this year, am I wrong with that? And if you go higher?
I believe under the levy, using last year's estimates, and that's, you know, the town's valuation's increased, so that these numbers are all inaccurate.
Right.
But there's more than 5% room for an increase.
That's what I'm saying.
If we spend everything we could, and that's what we tried to not do, our goal was to keep the increase under 5%, I can't tell you for sure we have until we have the numbers.
I think the town should, I think the people who are voting should understand that their taxes are gonna go up, 5% minimum, which?
But we don't know.
Well, I tell you, we're pretty close, because I've been doing some calculation, people know I've been running around town getting numbers and so forth and so on. Our taxes are, well, to give you an idea, and it was just in Boston Magazine, March issue, they did an evaluation on every town from Worcester and East, gotta be a couple hundred towns in there. Who's on the bottom of that list? Our town. Our evaluation of our town on our property has gone down since 2003, has gone down 26.5%. Now, the abutting towns, now, you can please look that up, you're more than welcome to, if I'm off by a cent or two, fine, but I'm just repeating what Boston Magazine has. Now, if you go and look at the surrounding towns, okay, I think Halifax is down 2% over the last year, but prior to that, they were up, they're just down this year. Our evaluations on our houses, I feel, are much higher than they should be, because we're, our evaluations are equal to our surrounding towns, which are in much better condition. We're kinda like the sister poor brother part of this area.
Why do you say that?
Well, I give you an idea.
No, but I mean, we have had the state come out, I remember, a couple of years ago, and they said Plimpton was the most expensive town of any abutting town.
Well, is that the truth?
It is.
But if the state believes they're that, they're the ones who set the valuation in terms of education, and that's why we're paying.
The formula that is used to do the education budgets, and it's a complex formula, I don't understand it, but it is based on, it's not just, I don't know what value you were looking at, because I would say the taxable value of the town, I can't believe with Cisco having come in, it's gone down 25%. So, you, I don't know what value you're looking for. But anyway, based on per capita income, and all those factors, we are far from one of the poorest towns around here, so.
Well, I'm not saying we're, don't misunderstand me, I think, I'm talking, I'm talking about the real estate part, you may take in the whole concept of the entire town, but I'm talking about the real estate part, which plays a big part in our town, as far as taxes are concerned.
Yeah, I think we're getting off.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, maybe.
I mean, you're certainly free to speak on town meeting floor.
Oh, I, I.
But I would just say you ought to check that.
I'd rather, I'd rather, I think, I'm gonna more or less, there's nothing we can do about what's gonna happen as far as what's gonna hold, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak at this select meeting continually about this whole issue. I love this town, I'd love to stay here, but I'm retiring now, my wife's retiring now, and at this point, you know, it's crazy, the taxes just kill us.
Well, the budget right now shows a 6.8% increase, I mean, so people are certainly aware of.
Well, that was up and beyond, remember last year, we bought the old houses and jacked them up, because they said they wouldn't under 100%, which are the people who've been living here the longest, and then we turn around, and we're gonna give another 5% this year. Those people are gonna be in touch, great.
Yeah. So, the tax rate didn't go up last year?
Well, no.
No, but.
The tax rate didn't, but the taxation on the older houses did.
And some people went up.
That's the assessment.
We never heard of the people who were assessed less.
Of course not.
Well, no, of course you never get to hear about the people who were assessed less, but what about the, I'm more concerned about the people who live in this town.
I agree.
Been here for generations, and I have, I've only been here for one generation. We're talking about people who've been here for multi-generations, can't afford to live in their houses anymore. It isn't fair.
I agree with you on that point.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on.
Okay.
Article seven.
But I was asking one question, you said that if everything's kind of, let's say, 5% at least, isn't there 2.5%?
Explain that to me.
Just, I didn't say 5%, and I, my guess is it's going to be about 5%, but no, everyone that's throwing a number around, nobody knows, okay? I'm sorry, that we don't have a value of town's valuation, and without that number, you cannot calculate a tax rate. Everybody can guess, but that's, that will come.
What about Prop 2.5?
Okay, what I explained before, so every year under Prop 2.5, you can raise your taxes no more than 2.5% plus the value of new growth in town, new things that came in.
We have to vote on it.
No, that's the law.
Go.
It's up 2.5% every year, keeps going up. So, if you choose to keep everything, your spending level, it's still going up, and you can end up with a big gap.
I thought the voters had to approve.
No, that's automatic.
But you have to prove if it goes over 2.5 by now.
Over 2.5?
Over 2.5.
Okay, that's what you're saying.
Town meeting, no, but at a town meeting, you decide whether you wanna vote up to 2.5. Town meeting decides what means.
But we're gonna go up way over 2.5%. This year, we're not voting it, because we have space, we have that space.
They're covered by the.
We're still gonna be well under that space, and that's, if you look at the warrant last year, we advised caution, and we're gonna, you have to continue to advise caution, because it's, that's the danger.
Okay.
And this year, it's gonna go up 2.5% more, so you're still.
Okay, I understand.
What, what you're allowed to tax goes up 2.5% whether you spend it or not.
Okay.
And so, then if you decide when you're, I'm gonna spend the kitchen sink and everything else, you can go all the way up to the top in one year.
We hope you won't vote.
Yeah, we should try not to do it.
Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, the treasury, the sum of $31,500, financial loss, so. This is recommended by the board of selectmen and the finance committee, and it's expected that this article would be raised in appropriate, this would hit the tax rate effect. Article six, to see if the town will borrow in anticipation of money from the state chair. This is, every year we do the highway department, this allows them to borrow money that they know the state is gonna reimburse, recommended by the board of selectmen, and we'll have the sum by town meeting. Right now, it's still in place. Article seven, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44. This is to reauthorize revolving funds. Last year, we had three revolving funds in town, and it turned out that the tax, I believe it was the tax one, that a piece of it couldn't be, the state didn't allow, so it's been changed, so we have recreation and just tax title. And what this allows them to do is, they have a revolving fund each of $20,000. They get funds from, in the case of recreation, youth programs, activities, special events. They put that into the special fund rather than the general fund, and then they can draw it down against it when they wanna spend for recreational expenses, or tax titles in the case of the assessors, or the treasurer.
And we'll have that number at the town meeting.
Yes, well, all we're authorizing is that, that we continue to allow them to spend up to, to have the revolving funds, $20,000. We never know how the funds are gonna come in, they'll just come in.
Thank you.
Article eight, see if we'll vote to raise an appropriate $4,000 for the purpose of preparing the fiscal 2017 triennial real property valuation. We do a third a year, I believe, and this is gonna be a raised in appropriate article, something that we've always done in the past, too. Article nine, see if we'll vote to raise an appropriate $11,000 to pay the first annual lease payment for a police patrol vehicle. That's recommended by the board of selectmen and by the finance committee. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be paid to the Acting Council on Aging Directive for Services Rending, recommended by both the board of selectmen and the finance committee.
So, so what's the deal on that? Does, I don't remember ever voting on something like this.
We have not.
That's why we're voting as the first time.
So, it's a pay, it's a paid position?
It's a stipend, uh, no, it's a paid position.
It used to be a volunteer position, right?
Right.
So, so going from zero to 5,000, is what you're saying?
Yep. Chris Moreno will be the speaker, as I understand it, on the tour, and so should be the case of conservation.
And that's gonna be a reason appropriate?
As of now, yes.
She presented to the finance committee an accounting of the amount of time that she puts in, and that anyone would be required to put into this position, and it's well over, in terms of a dollar figure, it's, this is a very reasonable way to recognize that we have a volunteer degree.
We have volunteers on a lot of boards that are volunteers.
Yeah.
And have a major.
I'm sure it's gonna be.
Should be interesting.
Discuss, for sure, on the town floor.
Is this for, did I understand this, if the wording is for the past services rendered, not for upcoming? It's for upcoming? So, this is part of the, is it a stipend, and like, is it on the wage and personnel bylaw? I don't understand how it fits in with the other structures in town for pay.
Is it in the schedule for wage and personnel?
I don't think.
It went to wage and personnel, there.
It's not.
They have some from wage and personnel.
It is, the article itself is sponsored by wage and personnel.
Director of Eld, is it, it's on the wage and personnel bylaws, under salaried employees, and it's called Director of Elder Affairs.
Okay, I just missed it. Could you just clarify, clarify something? My thought, I saw where the budget for the council on aging had decreased, is that to make up for the pay for the director?
No, that was their request, they, part of that number is what it costs to run their van, and they found out it cost a lot less than they anticipated. We appropriated what they requested in that one.
Okay, so it did not, one, didn't get increased because, okay. Do you have any idea how many of the other directors are all paid, but the council on, elderly affairs or council on aging, because my understanding is, this is one of the few towns that does not pay.
Understanding is, they're all paid. It's paid, south, like, full-time, full-time, so it's not.
Putting it under wage and personnel, does that make it ongoing, so if it is noted, that way it pays?
It'll keep going, yeah.
But don't we have to vote if it can be, so, so this vote is also to add it to wage and personnel, isn't it?
It's to add another person, it's to add another person to it, and it's permanent.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, wage and personnel is not asking us to add this position to the town, is it?
Well, the article says, as described in the job description, accepted by wage and personnel, so maybe, I don't wanna speak to that, because I don't speak for wage and personnel, but maybe that article's gonna vote.
I guess I'm just saying that I didn't know that they could add a position, it's like at the school, we can't hire a new curriculum coordinator without permission.
Yeah, but they're bringing this to town meeting.
Yeah, I just, I don't think the wording is clear enough, just to me, I don't think the wording is clear.
Article 11, see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $7,971.49 to pay the annual lease payments, sponsored by the fire chief, recommended by the board of selectmen and the finance committee. This is a, we've already approved the equipment, so we just pay the.
Now we got paid for it, right?
Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer available funds, some money to partially, to retire or partially retire debt, or take any other action relative there, too. This is recommended by the board of selectmen and the finance committee. Do you wanna just mention what this debt would be, Sue?
Can I just back up with?
Sure.
I just wanna point out that out of this entire budget that we have of, this is about the warrant articles, $9.7 million that we pay, our council on aging, that's budget, is $26,000. So, for anyone who thinks that this stipend's inappropriate, because a percent of our budget during the expense, we do not, we do not spend much money on the council on aging.
I don't think it's inappropriate, I don't think it's not, it's unfair to all the volunteers.
I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by doing that, only in that, what about the director from Conservation Commission, what about the director for the?
We don't have a director.
Well, you, well, we do have a chair, that's, that's another.
That's a different thing. Anyway, I'm sorry, I'm, our article, sorry, John.
Article 12.
Okay, article 12, the, what we are hoping to do, we, the finance committee, is to pay off out of this article, using capital stabilization money, the remaining debt and interest on the roof at the dentist school, which predates the project of the school, this is way, way back, and also the balance of the town barn project. So, that, because we have the money in capital stabilization, we will not have to make continuing payments, and talk to you about trying to do some new, possible public safety buildings, it seems wise to retire some old debt.
Is there an amount on that yet?
I have a $99,000. This one's require a two-thirds vote, unless I say it's two-thirds, everything else is a chair, okay? But this one will require a two-thirds vote.
It's $99,028.
Two-thirds, okay.
I assume that'll reduce the substance.
It'll change, it's already, we've already.
Yeah. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a total sum of $104,691.46, pay annual lease payment for the fire department pumper and the GMS/EMS vehicle, so this is part of the lease payments. Since this is coming out of capital stabilization, this will require a two-thirds vote also. Anything that comes out of, recommended to come out of capital stabilization, has to first be approved by the board of selectmen, the finance committee, and the capital stable, what?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement committee, before it can go to town meeting, and then town meeting has to approve it. Any of those four committees, communities turn it down, then it doesn't go forward, unless it comes out of reason appropriate or reserve or whereabouts.
I'm sure there has to be a financial reason why this is, this is set up.
Well, we're gonna have to pay the lease payments to the debt.
Right, definitely.
So, the question is, where do you bring the money from?
It's a question, why are we paying out of capital stability?
Right.
Because we can.
Because we can.
And then eliminate the debt, isn't it?
No, it's not to eliminate the debt, it's.
But you have to pay it, so it'd be ending.
It would be a payment on.
It would be raised in appropriate, if you.
Right, raise it on the tax rate, otherwise. Capital stabilization is money that's been set aside, you know.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Article 14 is our traditional community preservation article.
Housekeeping article, required by Community Preservation Act law, to put a minimum amount in each of the little reserve funds, and this is what we do. minimum amount in each of the little reserve funds, and this is what we do every year.
And this is money that's already been, been, uh?
Well, this, this money is estimate of next year's receipts.
But this is CPC, this is not, that's affected.
That's correct. That's just good money. Article fifteen, see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of twenty-six thousand five hundred to reimburse the town of Kingston for an imbalance on the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, chapter seven, state eight, seventy, state eight order. This came up last year.
We agreed last year to pay back to Kingston the hundred and five thousand dollars. We were under taxed, and this is the second payment of a full-year agreement to pay back on the time.
Recommended by the board of selectmen and by the finance committee. Article sixteen, see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of seventeen thousand three hundred to purchase and equip an asphalt recycler and hot box. Recommended by the highway surveyor, recommended by the board of selectmen and the finance committee. Right now, the, uh, these funds will come out of the capital progress fund, which means it would require a two-thirds vote. And Jim Mokady will talk to this on the floor.
I wonder, uh, if I could ask him, but I wonder if they expect this to last, how many years, do you know?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask Mokady. You'll be able to talk to Mokady at the annual meeting, they'll tell you.
It has to be at least five, or it couldn't be funded out of capital stabilization. So, it's not a short term. I think it's a long time.
Article seventeen, if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of twenty-five thousand to employ an engineering project consultant to review plans, request for proposal, and final bids for construction of public safety facilities and related infrastructure improvements. Recommended by the board of selectmen, recommended by the finance committee. The board of selectmen voted two in favor and one against.
All right, no, no, one of them stayed.
Does that include the modular ideas?
Yeah, all that extra money we don't have.
I'm, I'm, I'm glad to speak to this.
Sure.
Here, a bit. I wanna make clear, though, that I am speaking as a private citizen, not as a selectman. I am a butter of property that was at one time considered a possibility for the public safety buildings. So, hopefully, it'll be eliminated soon. But because I am in a butter, I, I recuse myself from this vote. But as an interested citizen who has sat through ten million meetings on this, um, I, I can, I personally can highly recommend this article. It is intended to give us a consultant to bring us to the point that we can bring a completed, polished plan to town meeting, to go ahead. The intent, I think, right now of the selectmen and the committees that's putting this together is to come to town meeting with a plan for a police station. If it is done as a modular thing, modular company would do most of the design, the modern modular techniques are such that the exterior and the feel of the building can be very compatible with town. By doing it as a modular thing, we think we can probably save forty percent of the cost, that instead of looking at combined fire, police buildings in the seven to eight million dollar range, there is the hope that that could all be done for four million. If it were done at that, it could be bonded, it could kind of come out of capital stabilization. So, the whole thing could be done, if we have these numbers right, and no further tax increase to the town. So, the immediate next step, though, is having a consultant to help us make sure we're not missing anything in putting together the plan.
Who's gonna present this? I'm sorry, I thought you were completed. Who's gonna present this?
Either.
Who's gonna be the person, John Henry or Colleen Tubbs?
So, who was the abstention, was it?
It was my abstention, because I'm in a lot of.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Though I, I believe it was that.
Do they have to put in a bid, a project to bid or something, to be the con, consultant?
Yeah.
And how many firms do you normally ask?
This'll go out to a request for, uh, repeat, request for. Propose, so to go out to any number.
Oh, okay.
Article eighteen, see if the town will vote to rescind the vote taken under article twenty-four of the May fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting approving the Silver Lake Regional School District Committee vote of May ninth, two thousand and thirteen to establish a stabilization. Recommended by the board of selectmen.
Who's, who was?
Two to one.
Two to one.
Yeah. Who, who was in the?
Uh, that would be me. And I, I, I can explain why, if you want.
You can wait to me briefly?
Briefly?
Sure. My concern on rescinding this is, I, I don't think it serves much purpose, and I think it just further cloudies, muddies the water. With some attempt underway to create a more collaborative and communicative connection between the school committee and the selectmen and other committees in town, it just seemed to send a message that wasn't necessary.
All right. This, I'm sure, will be debated on the floor, so I'm sure there'll be some discussion on this. It, it doesn't have a, uh, a money value, but I think.
That's, that's what I was, is money value.
It's just creating the fund at this point.
Oh, so there's no money value?
There's no money.
Where's the money gonna come from?
It depends. We have different resources that come into the school. Nothing's been decided yet.
Oh, okay, so, it, well, I mean.
This is rescinding the stabilization vote.
That we are reporting for this last year.
Some two voted for it, and Al Dax and Houston voted against it last year.
Oh, is that what?
Or in two thousand and fifteen, I remember.
Thank you.
And any two, the two towns, two towns or three towns? Just two, just two. Any two that voted, it, if, it, if all three have to do, I mean, have to, it happens.
Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Blue Wave Capital. Are there assigned, e, for a solar facility? This is recommended by the board of selectmen, and will be discussed on the floor. And I, so, I feel qualified to talk, but. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to accept Mass General Law Chapter six fifty-six, pertaining to authorizing quarterly billing beginning in the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. What this would do, would instead of being billed every six months for your tax, real estate taxes, it would be every quarter.
We already tried that.
Excuse me?
We already tried that.
Right, it's being recommended again, so I'm sure this one will be debated on the floor. And that's recommended by the treasurer and recommended by the board of selectmen.
Will they explain the additional cost for having a quarterly payment versus a semi-annual or whatever, twice a year, or?
My understanding is perceived to be relatively minimal in what we gain in terms of cash, in terms of cash flow, far, far over, over the ways any cost, clerical cost.
The way things work now, we have town meeting in May, and our first tax bill's coming November. And so, there's this big gap. So, it, it makes much more, actually, it makes more sense to have money coming in at a regular interval, so that you can just kind of, you know.
What, and we're gonna let us put it on the credit cards, and?
No, but I, I think I remember that the reason we went to the two was because it was too much work for the personnel that we had at the time. You know, that, four times a year was a lot, if you look at it ten years ago, and what we had at the town hall to do a big.
Well, it's a lot more automated.
Yeah, and a lot more automated. So, I think it makes perfect sense.
Well, yeah, but the town has.
I think you and I were both on the finance committee.
I know, really.
The town really has grown since two thousand, which is.
It's, it's a cash flow situation.
Yeah, it's a sales issue.
Yeah.
We are more computerized, though.
Much more computerized, yeah. It's not that there's more work, it's just more, more efficiently done.
Now, let me ask a question on that. I, I want to pay my taxes that I owe, in, on the, on the day they do. And, uh, of course, the day they do, the place is closed. And, and so, I had to try, I had to do it by computer, which I didn't, don't know anything about. And it turns out, I got, I paid it twice, because, because I didn't know how to do it on the computer, so I, I called the, the bank, and, you know, one on the telephone, and they didn't. Well, it's just gotten written up today. But, but what my wonder is, I think she said she couldn't take it, because there's no account set up at some time. In other words, could, I wanna know, can I pay this on a, the way I am now, every six months, even though it's changed a lot?
I don't believe so.
No.
No? Now, that, I, I think that's wrong.
Well, you know, you can walk in, or, like, I know it's due Friday. They're closed on Friday. I went to them Monday, walked in on Monday. I just walked in on Mondays, that's it, you know?
That's what they took, it doesn't say that on the tax.
Yeah, right.
It says, if you don't, you're gonna be penalized, and they don't take, uh, the date stamp of the post office, that's not it. So, I, I just went, but why can't I pay my taxes the way I wanna pay them?
I'm, I'm not the tax collector, but.
I think I should be able to pay my, I'm used to paying them twice a year, and that's where I'd like to continue. Is this reason I can't?
Then you'll have to vote against this article.
Yeah, I think that's a good question for Colleen, uh, Colleen Warren on the floor.
Okay.
The tax collector, that should be fine.
Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend the municipal bylaws relative to the controls, control of dogs in the town of Plimpton. I believe this is just, um, changing the words, August thirty-first, to, following to June thirtieth, and replace with March to December thirty-first. And I think one of the things the town clerk was trying to do was, she sets up now so that the dog license goes out with the census. And she avoids two mailings, so it seems to make sense.
So, that doesn't, so, so that doesn't mean that there's gonna be anything about controlling the dogs, aren't we?
They don't know for it.
And Tara, I'm sure, will explain it on the floor, but I believe it's just a date change.
Yeah.
I don't have a dog, but if they end up in my, uh.
Actually, it'll save the town money, because she doesn't have to double, double sun stuff, so it saves a few dollars.
Article twenty-two, this is the article that we talked about earlier. To sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of the fee of any lesser interest in four parcels of land located on Maple Street and Palmer Rose. Said parcels should be limited to two residential building lots. Proceeds from the sale shall be deposited into the capital stabilization account. My understanding is that legal has just come through, it said that's not possible. So, the wording on this will be changed on the floor, as to where the, if this land was sold, where the money would go.
It can't go on the capital stage?
Not from what the town lawyer has been telling us. Okay? So, that will change, and I, I, point frankly, can't discuss that piece of it.
I understand.
But if there's any questions around why we're selling it?
Why? Why are you selling it? Why are we selling it?
Hate to sell our town property.
offset the six percent increase in taxes, I would hope.
A vote of two, selectmen for, and one abstaining.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I can speak to it. I'm the one that abstained, because I'm in a butter of his property. I think the rationale for the selectmen to vote for it is, it's town, it's property that isn't being used, and the town could garner some revenue from it, and could use it for other purposes, such as the public safety buildings, that, that, their point of view.
Would, would, would the property vote against this if, if we don't know how much they're gonna get for the property? If they're gonna get a thousand dollars a lot, I'd wanna keep the property. If they're gonna get a hundred thousand, I wouldn't sell it.
On the floor, I'm sure they're going to indicate what they believe the amount is, okay, for the lots?
They'll be done open auction.
Well, I think they had a, did you put in a, sort of a minimum thing?
There, there is an appraisal that has been commissioned, that I believe they'll have the result of that on Monday. And, as I understand it, I don't know what will happen on town meeting floor, but if this passed, and if they would head with it, they would sell it, or, or it would be put up to bid, there would be some minimum bid under which they would not sell it.
So, that discussion of town meeting.
And they will discuss what they plan to do with the money, if it, if it passes to get sold?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Would it, uh, if, if it can be sold, you, if I heard right, it cannot be put into the capitalization, which would help us with our taxes? Am I right?
Well, it will come into the town, it just can't go into that particular account.
But could it go into an account that would help for the taxes?
It can go into an account, as I understand it, we just heard this yesterday afternoon, a separate account, different name, money could be borrowed from it for capital projects, projects, um, of capital improvement that lasted at least five years. So, it's really an accounting or a bookkeeping thing, as I understand it.
So, basically, that land could be, could be used for the building of the police station?
No, this is being sold as, no, I think.
I mean, the money's from it.
Oh, yes.
Yes, correctly. There is the counterbalancing opinion that selling town land for development is absolutely insane, financially nuts, and in that thirty or fifty years from now, people would look back and scratch their heads and wonder why.
So, we'll debate that on.
I wanted to comment, speaking as someone who may or may not be interested in purchasing those, I won't vote for those, because I completely agree with you. We, I don't, I don't like the location, the idea of two homes being there. Our schools are getting overburdened enough, and I don't think that, I don't think whatever money we get out of it is gonna be worth it in the long run.
And if I can, I, I also, I'm not involved in this, I, there's two, two levels on which that I have an issue with this. One is, if you get a one-time revenue, we did that last year, we had one-time revenues that came in, and we spent them, and they're gone.
Right.
And in the meantime, you've lost part of the heritage of the town, and if you look around, you see there's a lot of development going on. The other part I have an issue with, and I, I mean, I can't go to selectmen's meetings, because the finance committee meetings are at the same time, so I don't actually know what the dialogue was. But I believe before we, any decision is made to sell land owned by the town, we, there should be some public information meetings where we're explained what land we own, what land is protected in town, and have a forum and a discussion instead of one handpicked piece. I don't know who picked this piece, and I think there's no process in this, and I think it may not, you know, maybe selling land makes sense, but there has to be a process where the public has a chance to ask questions and be informed. And that's been absent. And again, I, maybe it happened at the meetings, I wasn't there, but.
But the consultants that are in one of the other amendments, opportunity to hire them, that does not include a major plan for the town as far as selling off property? I mean, I have no idea what the town owns either, but that wouldn't come into consideration as they try to decide where to put these things?
The committee that has been meeting for many months, looking at the public safety buildings, at the moment, is by far most strongly considered, considering a new police station between the town barn and the townhouse. Where the fire station would go is still open.
Well, what would you do with the fire station, Anna?
I guess I just don't understand why all of that is not taken into consideration as a.
Well, it, it, the, the.
I guess a bigger.
Public safety building committee, the previous committee did look at all that, and it has been discussed over the last six months.
There were three sites, right? There was Center Street, the Maple Street, and the town.
The Ball Park.
I mean, the plan that, I, none of this is written in cement or solidified or decided, but the present plan would be police station first on town-owned property, probably fire station on Center Street, though that hasn't been decided yet, or possibly the purchase of some other land.
The town had voted at a previous town meeting, monies to go up and see if it could, Peric and.
Right, I remember that.
Septic.
And that, and all that's ongoing. In fact, ongoing. In fact, ongoing investigation on Center Street to see if it would be sued.
So that's going to all come out on the floor. That'll be probably the discussion, what makes sense. Article 23 is 12 pages of...
I'm a bit waiting to read.
Go ahead, start reading. So if I will, all I can say to this is, Colleen Thompson, I believe, is going to make the motion. And she will have to explain how this amendment works.
Actually, I read it. I was just telling Tim that I, I had something, I put it in the envelope and didn't bring it down. Maybe it was telephonic. Going to the selectman about the federal lawsuit that Solar City has filed against Salt River Project, which would be like riches in Arizona. It's a federal lawsuit by Solar City against...
Utility.
The utility. And I don't know if there's any way to make it out or not, but...
It says?
It essentially says that if you're going to have solar power in your home, you're going to pay, you're going to pay us $50, $50 a month, no matter what.
To maintain the line.
And the reason for it is that we maintain the lines. We, and we have all this work we're going to do to get electricity to your house. And we're still going to do that. And so you're going to pay for it.
But that has nothing to do with this really?
What I would say about this is, there is a solar bylaw in place now. There's a solar bylaw review committee that was put together to go off and look at what we have. And this is their recommendation for changes to it. So I'm going to wait and let them comment on how this would affect the town.
I would just add that my understanding is the changes they've made are relatively minor, really just spiffing up mostly odds and ends, as I understand it. There's not any huge...
It would have been better if they highlighted the changes, you know? Because now, like you said, 12 pages going back and forth.
The law has, the law has to do with how far off the road they are and the protection of the town. That's, that's when most of the changes are made, as far as I can see. I only read it twice. But it has to do with, it has to do with how far off the road they are, the size of the vegetation, and how long they have to maintain it for, which is big. I mean, I don't know about you, but we need, we need solar, we need power. Personally, I'm against anything that makes our town look ugly. So with, with that being said, and they have the vegetation and everything else, so you don't have to look at it from the road, it doesn't look like it's going to ruin the view of the town. I don't have a problem with it.
It has an effect on wildlife, you know that?
But we still need it.
The heat generated by those great big fields.
Well, it does, but they're, they're saying that even cutting down the forest to set it in, the passive solar outweighs the forest. Now, how that works, I don't know, but I'm, that's just what the engineers are saying. And I'm just a dumb old structure worker.
We'll let the committee talk to them.
Yeah, we'll talk with them.
Article 24, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of general law, et cetera, et cetera, for the purpose of creating a cable television public access enterprise fund. In connection with, to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds of cable television related revenues, including but not limited to fees paid to the town by cable television licensees and any other revenues received by the town for cable license and cable television. Mr. Wilson?
Why do I always get the easy ones to find?
I don't understand anything this one's saying.
I can't understand why you can't understand. This is a really complex issue, a big, long story. Let me make it as brief and hopefully as concise as possible. We had a 10-year license with Comcast. They had been running a combined studio for Halifax and Plumton, pretty much the last one in the state that Comcast was running. That closed in December. Over the last two and a half years, the town of Plumton had been negotiating with Comcast on a license renewal. We also had been negotiating with the towns of Halifax and later on, the towns of Carver on forming a joint studio. We had pretty much all that stuff done in November, a new license agreement with Comcast ready to be signed, a tri-town intermunicipal agreement ready to be signed that would form a tri-town studio to take care of everything. At pretty much the last minute, an issue came up with new legislation and one of the 11 selectmen in the three towns bringing up a potential problem with Department of Revenue that made the deal be nixed until we got to town meeting to create this enterprise fund. So that's a long-winded way of saying the enterprise fund is kind of an accounting or housekeeping article that, that allows us to fulfill the new state legislation. What the state legislation was trying to do was make absolutely certain that fees that came from Comcast and went to the town went to studio operation and public access rather than anything else. So that's the story on that. If we vote for this, we will, the selectmen will then be able to enter into the other two agreements. We will join the tri-town studio. If by chance this is turned down, we will go black. We won't have any public access.
But the other, the other two towns are receptive to us joining them, right?
They are thrilled about it. And one other, in some ways, even more serious ramification of turning this down, besides going black, is I, this is, I think, a really beautiful example of the power of regionalization, of several towns working together, getting a much better product in a much more cost-effective way. And I think if we do this, we prove to ourselves and other towns that we're capable of doing this. If we don't do this, we just put another cloud over our ability to regionalize. In the big sense, I think at least half of our way out of the financial mess we're in as far as high taxes is through regionalization. And this is a good example of that.
I think there will be a broader discussion on the floor. It was voted by the selectmen too far and went against. So whether or not that person's going to speak to it, I'm not sure. But I have heard some other discussions around some pros and cons. So we'll let that go to the floor.
Can I just ask a question? The other two towns have, they haven't been able to function either because of us?
No, they were able to go ahead.
They've gone ahead, yes.
Because of the uncertainty that was created in late November on this, they wanted us to wait until we get this article done.
So it's in place, it's up to whether we join...
The Carver Halifax studio is up and going. It has been a real challenge in getting the public access out because of the same time that the Comcast studio closed, the Carver studio, which was in the high school, moved to a new location. So it's a work in progress, but moving along beautifully with a lot of expertise there that we contend.
I have a question. What about this cable, cable television? I thought it was on the way out. Like I see on my computer, it says, you're not going to need cable anymore because everything's going to go on your computer.
It's why I always spend...
Many, many towns are in fact offering not only access to this kind of public information through cable, but also now more through internet. I think if any of us knew where cable will be in three or five years and knew for certainty, we would be in line to be extremely wealthy. I think it's real hard to predict where it's all headed. I mean, I think I do need to mention one other thing. Out of the agreement, the new agreement with Comcast, there will be a surcharge on cable bills. It will be approximately 4.25% surcharge, not on the internet part of the bill, but on the television part of the bill.
4.25% of what this person pays?
Of what we pay?
The bill I get now, not from, nothing to do with the town.
This has to get paid for some way. It can get paid for by a surcharge that Comcast would collect and then give to the town.
I think that's absolutely ridiculous.
I understand.
Well, because that cable television is nothing but 99% ads. And unless you're watching Channel 2, 1144, you might as well turn the sound. As a matter of fact, I turned, if I turn the sound off, every time it comes on. So I think anything, anything that they charge me, because I want to look for information.
But I believe that the surcharge is not on your internet part. It's just on, so it's only on a piece of your bill. If you don't have much TV, you're not going to pay much. That's the money that's going to pay for the studio for Plumton.
It's 4% of whatever you pay for your TV individually.
On average, we think it'd be about $4 a month.
So say you go to satellite TV.
You won't pay anything, you won't have the cable TV. And you might not get to see all the selectmen meetings.
Oh, no.
You do not want this to be...
Oh, no.
That would break my heart.
How long would this last?
I'll have to go personally.
10 years?
Is it renewed, you have to renew it every year?
No.
So are we locked into 4% of the 10 years?
What comes with that is Comcast pays a portion of that. They also are giving us $100,000 for capital improvements for a quarter.
But I asked you, what would happen if we said, we're not going to do it? Do you think she wouldn't be here?
She will not be here.
You mean to say, are they going to go out of business?
No, no, they will go...
Why would, why would they go to...
I don't understand. Carver and Halifax are paying.
They're already paying.
Well, I think they're crazy.
Okay.
I think they'll talk them out of it. And they're going to have people, people's going to come in and do it anyway.
No, they will not. Comcast originally, and I'm not, I'm not on the Comcast thing, but they had all these local studios. We had the Carver, Halifax, Plumton. They, this, that was one of the last ones. They do not do local stuff anymore. So I think we're being covered out of the goodness of Halifax and Carver right now. All the local programming will be gone. There will be nothing if you don't do this.
That's because somebody else has taken over. They still need the information.
Each, each community now has to do it themselves.
Somebody's making a buck out of this.
Yeah, Comcast.
Could I have easier articles next year?
You're going to have fun with this one.
Article 20...
And I just, and just can you, it's not going to just cover selectmen's meetings.
No, I, we...
We'll have better coverage.
Selectmen's meetings, school committee, major holidays. What we also get is a studio where youngsters can come and learn the art of doing this, where adults can come and learn how to create their own programming. Much more will come out of it than just that. It's a beautiful new studio, can be visited. It's in North Carver, right next to Cornerstones. Go down and take a look at it. It's a really cool studio, pretty much state of the art.
John, can I change the subject?
Yes, please.
There's a order to these articles. When I go to town meeting, sometimes Article 26 becomes Article 2. Who makes that decision? And this will not be at the beginning of the meeting, I hope, this cable thing.
Normally, we go through in the order that they're printed. However, any town voter can get up and recommend that we take it out of order. Then the meeting has to vote. If we don't do it, I'm not surprised.
Oh, okay, the meeting has to...
So the meeting says, let's move it up. And we've done that in the past where there were some articles that we knew, I think with the POCs, we motioned, we made the motion to move those forward.
Sometimes it's because if we need to know it, well, but if there's a limit to revenue, sometimes we have to know whether people are deciding, yes, you know this, to know whether we are available or not.
I remember the POCs when we did do that because we knew it was going to be contentious, I guess, if that's the right word.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Article 25 is our standard article that we always put at the end to see if the town wants to put any money into the general stabilization account.
We didn't even want, that's not, that shouldn't even be on the...
Does he have a passover, right?
25 has a passover, yeah. We actually didn't put it on the warrant this year, just, and I didn't notice it was there. We didn't recommend it.
Okay.
It's just, it's from the old, it's from some years past.
And then Articles 26 is our ending article, which is the election of officers. Who do you think's going to win? There's no contest in any of them. We certainly could use some volunteers, especially in the finance committee.
Planning board, too.
Planning board, too, correct.
It's a great chance for you really interested citizens to come to this every year. Seriously.
I'm already on board.
I can look around to everybody's on board.
I want some. Can I just, I didn't mention that in the, in the operating budget, there are going to be two lines in that that we're going to be asking voters to pay out of capital stabilization. So those two lines are going to require a voter's vote.
Which are total, I'm sorry, this note?
They're not articles, they're in the budget.
Oh, the budget.
Budget, the budget lines, we normally don't vote them on a capital stabilization. They're going to be lined, I don't have the numbers, let me do one second.
815?
815.
Principal in interest?
Yes, yeah, 815, that's the one.
And then 20?
Wait, I'm sorry, no, we're not, no, no.
So the principal in interest?
It's, yeah, 815, it's the principal in interest and the other outstanding debt we have. And you'll notice that the value of that line has decreased a lot. That's because if we vote the warrant article to pay off the debt, we won't be making a payment on the denture from the town barn. So and then the rest of that is just ongoing payments. We also are going to ask voters to pay line 820, which is a denture, debt exclusion line, that, that value out of capital stabilization. And as that, that line is a debt excluded line, which means it's, it's outside of the normal tax increase. And by voting that out of capital stabilization, that, that will actually help keep the tax bill a little bit lower.
So on those two lines, we'll leave it at...
Two-thirds vote for those two.
You take the two-third vote articles first, so there's two-thirds of the people? Is it when you count at the beginning or however many is left?
We take them as they come.
So if there's only 10 people left, I mean, I don't understand how it works. If you have these contentious things late in the meeting and half of the audience is left, is it just two-thirds of the people who are there?
Actually, these two are in Article 4, which is right up front. We go through the budget line item by line item. And people can say, hold on any line item where they have a question. In which case, we do it in groups. So we do like highway departments, police is another. As we do that, we set aside the whole line item, vote the others, come back to the whole. And then people either say, I want to change it, or I have a question on it. After we've discussed it, we vote and we do one.
Could you, sir, please explain the, to the people, the quorum for town, for this town, please?
Quorum is 35 people. We normally have 125, so we're well over it. I don't believe in the last...
One year, one year toward the end, we call for a quorum.
Yep.
We've had of that?
We had to call people to come back.
Yeah, get people to come back.
Second night, yeah.
Not on the first night.
No, it was the second night.
The second, it was the second after that. Somebody yelled, "Quorum!"
If you're in the middle of an article, it doesn't matter whether there is a quorum or not.
Thank you.
If the article has started and says, I want, somebody says, I want a quorum come, it's still vote that article, the next article, you would have to have a vote.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
One more thing I'm going to add, because I, that the last article on the warrant, that is to add money to regular stabilization. I just want to remind people that a couple of years ago, the town approved a town, a petition for bylaw that automatically diverts some of the revenue from industrial park into the capital stabilization account, which is what we're talking about funding things out of. And a portion of that goes to increase of regular stabilization a little bit at a time because we're trying to get that up to the value that's recommended by, recommended to have, so.
What is our, who's been on the finance committee in charge?
Anyone in charge?
Oh, not anymore?
The chairman.
The chair.
Someone to facilitate the work of the group.
I beg your pardon, I'm not the chair. Could you tell us what the, the base number is on that at this point?
The balance of regular stabilization... The balance of regular stabilization as of June 30th, 2014, at the end of last fiscal year, was $313,000. In May of this year, an additional $132,000 goes in. That's money that came, it was, it's, it's part of that bylaw from last year, but again, because the tax revenues come in, sort of one of the last things you can do. It doesn't go into after these May tax bills. So the balance going into town meeting will be $445,000. It's the finance committee's position that regular stabilization is an rainy day emergency needs account and should not be used to fund anything in the regular budget. And if other people have other ideas, that's what we recommend. It's actually recommended that you have 10% of your budget in that so that if you have a, this winter, a roof collapse on a building or something, the town actually has the funds available to do your cases.
So what's our 10%?
10% would be $70,000.
Yes, we're waiting for it.
And that's with this article, we were, the balance was under $10,000.
To be realistic, I think this is wonderful.
I do, too.
And, and one of the reasons is there's so few of us here that, you know, when, when town meeting comes, people go, "Look at this," like I always do. And, "Oh, it's recommended by everybody, it's the full boards." And I'm glad that Mark told me that the thing he did right then was, because he had to use it, recuse himself. I think it's very helpful. The people that are going to come to town meeting, the other 120 people, they're going to have something good to go by to say, "These boards, the boards do a good job."
Obviously, we'd like to see more people at town.
Yeah, I'm surprised we have so few, to tell you the truth.
Hopefully, when they get their warrant, and they see that, you know, expenses are going up, that they'll come in and want to talk about this.
The moderator this year has put out sandwich boards at major intersections in towns to remind people...
I know causes for support.
And I'll just remind people that the selectman meeting Monday night at 6:30, time is being set aside for citizens to come in for further education and questions about the articles, too.
What, this, this Monday?
Yeah. Just the intent there, and I think we'll continue, the selectmen hope to continue to work on this, is find ways to have people be educated ahead of town meeting so that complex issues, it's kind of hard on town meeting floor to really present complex issues and for people to kind of understand which is the voice of reason or truth and which is the voice of something else. I mean, the goal is to just get as much information out ahead of time, so it's an educated vote, I'm telling you.
I'm going to put in something that I know personally has the dealing with going to town meetings is out of hearing. My husband would not go because he could not hear. By the time I could tell him what was going, it was voted. So, consequently, I still don't go to town meetings because of that. I mean, it just goes so fast.
The moderator does require people to use a microphone now when they speak.
Oh, yeah, we always use a microphone.
Well, even with a microphone, because if you get in and you get somebody sitting behind you and everybody talking among themselves, that diverts in there and it matches up their thought, because they're not hearing all of what you're saying.
Well, you're going to have to be polite, turn around and tell them to shut the...
I agree with you. It is a problem, but something's got to live with it, you know?
Well, like I said, he lived with it, he wouldn't go to town meetings.
I, I know that, that even if I hear things, I don't understand them. But that's one of my problems.
Yeah, well, this, I, I like this.
If somebody had any recommendation how to, how to solve that, it's something we...
I know, I know that.
One thing we are going to do, it doesn't help in case of out of hearing, but at the special town meeting, we had a boy scout with a microphone that could go around each speaker. We're still going to have the central microphone in the middle, and I would ask anybody who's not disabled. But we will also have a boy scout with a microphone so that if somebody feels the constancy...
Did you hear that, Peter? Did you hear that, buddy?
So I'm hoping that'll help.
John, could I just say something?
Absolutely.
I just want to take a minute to publicly thank the finance committee and the board of selectmen this year. It's been a tough year, and I, I know the hours that have been put in and the exhaustion and never having enough time to get anything done. And I hope you realize how much we all appreciate it.
I'll second that.
So if we could have a couple of candidates to come forward for finance.
That was my next one.
Very helpful.
Thank you, Will.
I was just going to say, my hope, my hope next year, this year, the calendar kind of worked against us and everything is happening really late. The warrants went out late. They didn't go out late, actually, the town meeting is a little bit early. But we're hoping next year to have a little bit of a bigger gap between when this information gets to people and when the town meeting is to allow for better discussion.
I asked you as a voter, voter position. And you're short.
Yep, there are two open seats, one for three years, one for two years, and there are no candidates.
It's a tremendous way to learn about the town, too, really, isn't it?
Oh, I agree.
I know something, you know, because of the age of a lot of people in this town, I would love to try and do something like that, but I can't hear a lot, I, I don't know.
Dead silence.
My mind isn't as good as it used to be.
Oh, come on.
But, I mean, I think you have to be younger people in town, you really do.
Surely...
That would be great.
I think it's the driving at night also is what, it's been one of the biggest issues that I've heard, is, you know, that...
Well, I thank everyone for coming.
There's a meeting.
Thank you for having us.
There's, there's plenty of coffee and refreshments, so please be sure to grab something on your way out.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.